Our Region District Resources Committee has been working on this issue with the Ministry of Forests and also they are trying to establish an air pollution quality committee for the West Guatemalan, that's in the works as well. There is general concern in the area that the Region District is trying to meet them, that concern.
Are you ready for the motion?
I'll write a letter to the Region District of Kitimatstikin with a copy to the appropriate officials of the Ministry of Forests expressing our support for their position regarding slash burning.
Second the motion, your worship.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Number thirteen on the agenda is a couple of requests, the first from the Recycling Council
Why don't we send a letter of support, your worship?
Second.
Counselor Lane?
I've read this information, I'm wondering if anybody on council has information for me, exactly who was Recycling Council of British Columbia, is it a government organization or?
No, it's a non-government organization of recycling bodies from around the province, it's the umbrella organization of provincial recycling programs.
And so these are the people who have been recycling for a long period of time?
Some, yeah.
Initial recyclers, for instance?
That's true.
Thank you.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. The second request, Art Walk ninety inviting our advertising.
Will be referred to the Publicity Committee, your worship.
With power to act, did I hear?
With power to act, yes. Second.
Within your budget, of course.
Just mentioning, your worship, that we did give a grant in aid for a collective group which included...
If I may, your worship, I had a call from Anne de Grace who had intended to be here this evening but was unable to because of illness and she said that these groups are still expected to come up with their own advertising and so she didn't feel that it was a duplication.
On the motion then to give power to act to the Advertising Committee to decide what to do with it, all those in favor, carried. Under fourteen, bylaws, the Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw is available for two readings.
Second.
Hearing no debate under second reading, all those in favor, carried.
Do we need to do this resolution to change the times, is that what you're indicating there?
Yes, if I may, your worship, there was a resolution setting eight o'clock for the public hearing for this same property to amend the land use regulation bylaw and generally the standard is to, at a public hearing, to deal with the community plan amendment first and the land use regulation amendment second, so that's why I'm asking for that change.
So we can do one resolution to do both those times?
Yes.
How about move we amend those hearing dates as outlined?
Second.
All those in favor, carried. Annual Budget Amendment Bylaw, I thought, Mr. Treasurer, we did this in September.
Yes, your worship, again, there were some significant changes which happened from September on to the end of the year.
So this is bookkeeping you're doing.
This is the bookkeeping legislation.
More first than second reading, your worship.
Second.
All those in favor of second reading, carried.
Third reading.
Second.
All those in favor, carried. Late items, we only have one left, item three on the late agenda list from the B.C. Coalition of Motorcycles asking for a proclamation of Nelson Motorcycle Awareness Week, May seven thirteen.
John, did you make the motion?
Yes.
Second.
Go ahead.
I would just like to know if anybody knows if their safety would include the helmets as an issue, does anyone have any for the helmet?
There's so much debate within motorcycling associations, I can't tell you, but I know that the wording of Motorcycle Awareness Week means that they're focusing on drivers seeing motorcyclists and I do not believe that they campaigned for safe helmet laws. I think these are free birds. On the proclamation motion, it requires unanimous consent, all those in favor, any opposed, carried. That's it for planned late items, anything missed, Mrs. Olson?
That's all, I hope you worship.
Going around the table then, committee reports, Alderman Neville?
It'll be quick, last Tuesday ended a meeting across the Region District Boardroom about the proposed upcoming health plan for the region and, but basically they're suggesting that fairly similar to the provincial regional plan where policies work their way up to the provincial cabinet level or ministry level, by all of the health boards setting up a new community organization, they're suggesting at the moment it will be the local area health council. I made the suggestion they maybe shorten it a little bit to Community Health Board. But anyway, that would have representation from Mount St. Francis, KLDH, the Union Boards of Health, Mental Health, et cetera, any organization to do with health would have a seat on that board and then they would recommend to a regional organization, which again would probably have one representative from its community, and they in turn would recommend to the province. So it's really a planning document about how we might proceed in the future with the way we manage healthcare in the area, that's what it was all about. On Saturday, I went to the small business awareness or opportunities meeting up at CIC and that was quite an interesting meeting, it represented members of council at the lunch and I attended all of the morning sessions, which were quite interesting. I'd just like to remind council, if you worship, that tomorrow the recycling depot is opening at five one nine First Street and we would be pleased to receive paper, newspaper, white paper, solid paper and computer paper and I'd like to move that council invite Mike, Recycle Michael, Michael Jessen to meet with the administration to work out how perhaps we can build paper from City Hall as other offices are going to be doing to the depot.
Do you think we need him to come here to tell us that? Why don't we just put a box in the corner, fill it up and bring it down?
That's fine, staff are quite happy with that, I'd just like to see us doing that in City Hall.
Why don't we resolve to put a box on each floor of City Hall for voluntary white paper recycling and do it?
I acknowledge that we asked the administration to organize recycling paper to the recycling depot.
Second.
Took all of a cardboard box at my other office, there it is, mark it, put the paper in it, when it's full, take it down.
Sure.
We need four boxes anyway.
I think we can handle that. On that motion, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Any other report, Alderman Neville?
No.
Good, thanks, Counselor Lane?
I had my first meeting with the Castle Guard Airport Committee, so we're just in the very initial stages, it hasn't been in operation for a long time to my understanding, so we're just meeting and deciding things like what direction we're going to go in and in orientation of the Royal Airport and the region. So that's very initial. The Clean Air Committee is also in initial stages of working out, working with other bylaws and working out our present bylaw. I wasn't able to attend the George Zuckerman concert, that was well attended, that was the night of my Castle Guard meeting, so I wasn't able to go unfortunately, I made it for the last fifteen minutes of the reception and everybody was gone pretty good. But from what I understand, George Zuckerman has expressed interest in coming back next year to put on a benefit for NUC, so that's really positive. There's no news yet on our extra federal funding for the Nelson Airport and the drainage ditch is still being worked on down on the airfield. And that's, that's it. With NUC, you were down in Vancouver this morning, we were on the radio, so I'll leave that now to you to discuss.
Okay, thanks Counselor Lane, and what about Alderman Grill?
Matter of statistical report for the month of April, Mr. Mayor, as of this morning, the Nelson Fire Department responded to twenty-two calls for the month of April. A total loss of thirty-six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars in fire loss and damage, which consisted of a fire at a dumpster at Texaco of five hundred dollars, a grass fire two hundred dollars, Mount St. Francis, the brush fire constituted a loss of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. The thirty-five thousand dollar loss is the building owned by Dr. McElwain which was saved, fortunately, Mr. Mayor. There was also a card of thanks by Dr. McElwain on April twenty-seventh in the Daily News, a card of thanks to the Nelson Fire Department. As far as ambulance concerned, there were ninety-five ambulance calls in April, Mr. Mayor, as of this morning, compared with ninety calls last year, corresponding time last year, a call constituted a revenue of two hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cents per call and that constitutes twenty thousand five hundred eighteen dollars of total revenue to the city of Nelson. Mr. Mayor, unfortunately the fire chief's not here, I wish he had been here, there was a question raised, that I had raised two weeks prior at the council meeting about cleanup of the dry, of dead grass in the city confines and I inferred questions to the director of works regarding some areas that could be cleaned up. However, the letter today regarding some, the burning in the city premises probably would have some effect on what the fire chief can do and what he would be willing to do as far as city cleanup is concerned. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a short summary of my attendance at AKBM in Trail, I'm sure you'll have to elaborate and other council members will as well. Unfortunately, I only attended one of the meetings and that was on Friday. My observation, Mr. Mayor, of the twenty-five resolutions that were passed, six failed, nineteen passed, there were some controversial ones, some resolutions have already been requested of passage by AKBM and UPCM previously and they were brought up before the Resolutions Committee as well. I'm particularly interested and I'm rather disappointed in the first one that we failed on, the Resolution number one that the city of Nelson presented regarding logging in the watershed which failed and I had the feeling perhaps that we could have possibly won that resolution, particularly in the fact that last year at the AKBM meeting in Grand Forks, there was much support on logging in watersheds and unfortunately you win some, you lose some. The other one, two other outstanding resolutions that I think that were above the others, Mr. Mayor, you made me differ, of course, was the one about the pensions for volunteer firemen, which failed as well, and that was brought in, I believe, by the city of Warfield and it failed as well. The other one was the resolution of the Castle Guard Council regarding going without access of the public or referendum for the installation and building of public buildings such as fire departments, city hall, police complexes, if they're, particularly if they are city-run services, that would entirely affect section three thirty of the Municipal Act. There were some concerns in discussion to this matter, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what your feeling is on it, is the fact that the autonomy of the council would be, in other words, the council would be more autonomous in their deliberation on spending the public's money. I think we're here to elect to represent the council, not to spend their money and perhaps that's why that resolution was defeated. And the final comment, Mr. Mayor, regarding the speakers on the environment, I think they were quite, they were, in other words, they were not in conflict one with one another, the speakers, however, they had a difference of opinion on environment, so I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks Alderman Grill, and Alderman Herswell?
Just one thing, your worship, I met with the executive director of the B.C. Real Estate Foundation this week on behalf of the Nelson Housing Committee to have an exploratory discussion with him of the possibilities of the committee obtaining funding from the foundation to do the housing needs aspect of the current rental strategy. Generally, the discussion was quite encouraging and he suggested that if an application is made, that it be made by a group of organizations and including the city, if the city is willing to do so. So it's possible that I would be bringing to council in the next week or two a completed proposal for your consideration so that we could join with the other organizations in the community in submitting this to the foundation. This would allow us to supplement what our consultants are not able to do with the limited funding we have from the province. That's all I have to report, your worship.
All right, and Alderman Remson?
Couple of things, your worship, just some information items. Basically, we've completed street sweeping. Treasurer Mosley tells me we're over budget on that. So we are able to proceed with final flushing of the streets and hope that that gets rid of the rest of the dust that's there, but they've done a good job this year and with the two sweepers, we've been able to do it a lot, complete it a lot sooner than previous years. The machine we bought last year, the patch master for paving, has started this week at Silver King Road, we have major patching to do and we should be able to operate that piece of equipment much more efficiently, we had some learning time on it last year, so we're on the way today. Regards to Cleanup Week, I don't know if council's aware, but it was so successful that we had to go through the next week and the Public Works and Parks Committee are ready to recommend to council that for next year that they run two weeks and we do the same process because it was very successful, we had a lot of phone calls about it and nothing but good from it has arisen, it was a good two weeks. Parks and Public Works Committee met on a couple of items and I'm sorry they didn't get to council for tonight, but I'd like to make some recommendations, your worship. The committee recommends that council proceed with a change to Rosemont Park by adding the closure of Hall Mines Tramway land, which is approximately one acre, to become part of Rosemont Park and ask administration to set the necessary information and get it ready for a bylaw reading.
Second.
Your worship, that would add one full acre to Rosemont Park without having to do anything but close that portion, which is known as a tramway access from the old Hall Mines Tramway and it is right adjacent to the park, so it would be a nice addition and give us another acre of land.
Are you ready for that question, all those in favor, opposed, carried?
Some items that were referred to the Parks and Public Works Committee regarding the Capitol Theatre Society, the Parks Committee recommends that the section of sidewalk on the north side of Victoria Street adjacent to and between the Capitol Theatre and BCTL be replaced as requested. That's one motion.
Second.
Okay, now does that involve, that's not part of your budgeted project?
We're finding it unable to move some things around in the budget, your worship, to handle it.
Do you need to build a new retaining wall down on the BCTL property?
We're not going to touch that section, BCTL, we're going to rebuild that.
That's their wall, your worship.
Yeah, but is there enough foundation for a full width sidewalk?
We'll build the same size as it is now, until they rebuild their wall, I wouldn't want to do anything else in there.
Thanks. On that recommendation, all those in favor, opposed, carried?
The recommendation of the Capitol Theatre to allow them to place a bench, as on their attached drawing, be allowed.
Second.
Worship, we've looked at it and I've been up there, I don't think the bench will impede any pedestrian traffic at all and it will just be a small bench and they have the bench ready to go and they'll install it properly and I've been assured by the manager up there that they'll do a first-class job as they've done with all the other items they've put up there for us.
Just a question on that, Alderman Remson, whereabouts would this bench be now?
Well, I think it was on their original drawing to go from their bulletin board right against the building, next to the...
You didn't sit on that too long, Alderman.
I didn't, no.
All those in favor of that, opposed?
The other, there's two other items, one was that they asked to plant shrubs or trees, we recommend that they not be allowed to, mainly due to the retaining wall that's the choice of the proper line, could and would probably be damaged by tree roots.
That's right.
That's a motion, your worship.
Power line, buried power line too.
They couldn't put a box type?
No, no, but... Well, not where they, they want to put it in right to the wall and...
It's too narrow a sidewalk.
On that motion, all those in favor, carried?
The request for placement of three tree planters be approved, that they will purchase them and build and Parks Department will provide the plants, your worship, but they will do the maintenance of it themselves, the Capitol Theatre, are there to go adjacent to the bench plus one near the entrance, same slot.
They're going to be in the box or?
Yes, they're going to be in planters.
In planters, oh, that's good.
All those in favor?
That's it, worship.
Now, how about your committee report? That's all you have?
That's what I had, the committee recommended that we do the Rosemont Park and we dealt with the Capitol Theatre in it.
Good, thanks Alderman Remson.
Just one small comment, your worship, to Alderman Remson, Public Works, the Region District Recycling Program, we were hoping to be ready to do something to cooperate with the Arbor Day, but next year we'll be ready, we just, we're working too hard on the project going to the province and the opening of the depot to be ready for the Arbor Days, but we're ready for it.
Good, Alderman Herswell?
Just one question to Alderman Remson concerning Rosemont Park, in light of the public meeting on Wednesday evening, is it possible to have any kind of ideas or suggestions even to present to the public with regard to what sort of development of the park is even possible?
No, we haven't had time to get, Peter is working on some items for it, but we haven't been close to finding them.
But we'll have some basic maps and things there, will we?
Peter's getting out what he can find from what we've had in proposals in the past for the park, there was some, but I don't know whether he's been able to locate them all, but it's fine, I talked to him today.
But we'll have our own maps of the city of that area?
Oh, yes, Mr. Adams has those, yeah.
That would be great. Okay, finished going around the table, just my own items really briefly, the Regional Municipal Association in Trail on the weekend, Friday, substantially a little bit into Saturday. What can we say, Alderman Grill, like you say, you lose some, you win some, there were some downright strange resolutions, I thought, they decided to rehash the entire RCMP turbine issue, which I thought was safely asleep months ago, but no, they had to deal with that and a few others to boot. We just do the best we can. Council members probably know that we had the opportunity this morning to be on the National CBC program morning side with Peter Zosky, that was projected about four weeks ago, but it was off, on, off, on, finally at the last minute last Wednesday, they said, we're on, can you be there, so I took the liberty and I was there because you don't pass up the opportunity for national promotion for the community. So Patricia Murphy of the Nelson University Center and Allee Norris for the Society did attend in Vancouver, they drove down, which was the best available and took inexpensive rooms. So I'd like to ask council retroactively for authorization to do that and to cover the basic room and gas expense for the two ladies, I expect it to be less than a hundred dollars.
That's all.
Second.
Thanks council, all those in favor, carried, Alderman Grill?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor, where is the next AKBM meeting to be held in Castle Guard, is it nineteen ninety-two is in Castle Guard, where is it going to be held next year?
I couldn't stay for the AKBM luncheon because I had to leave for this Monday radio event, so I didn't hear, I don't know if anybody else has.
Another point of interest, perhaps I should have mentioned in my brief, the Bank of Montreal was one of the sponsors, co-sponsors of the AKBM seminar in Trail, very unusual and I think they must be commended on their financial participation, Mr. Mayor, it's unbelievable, and one of the better ones, I would say, as far as our kits that we received are concerned and the luncheon.
You know, one of the issues they dealt with was, of course, that the municipal association annual meetings are in fact making money. They've got twenty thousand dollars in the bank and they make money and they're starting a scholarship, we voted to allow...
That's right.
...three scholarships of at least five hundred dollars apiece each year based on the interest of that pool of money because they organize the whole conference and make it self-funding from dues and fees to attend and then they get all the financial sponsors, like you say, what was it, the Bank of Montreal, you say?
Yes.
You have various others, Williamson Paving...
Yeah, Community, I understand.
So that's good government, when it pays for itself and makes money. Thanks Alderman Grill. I think that's it for regular council business, I think we need to adjourn this meeting.
Move adjournment. Excuse me, I thought we had a motion on the fourth, we have it recorded.
That's right.
I can't remember, did we?
Yes.
We didn't call the question?
Hundred dollars spurred.
I thought we called it. All those in favor then, opposed, carried, and done very proper, thank you.
Move adjournment. Second.
On the motion to adjourn, all those in favor, carried, adjournment. We do need to call to order our private session and we need to resolve the permission to attend for staff and with the acting mayor in the chair.
Second.
All those in favor, carried, and now we'll stand down for five minutes. All those in favor? Carry, and now we'll stand down for five minutes.
This concludes our cable cast at this time. For upcoming programming, watch Show Cable 10 telepages or read Wednesday afternoon Nelson Daily News. Good night.